Turn on their cameras and we're going to get started here with the virtual public hearing. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alrighty, everyone, thank you very much for joining us this evening for our virtual public hearing. This is for the State Road 915 Northeast Sixth Avenue from Northeast 147th Street to Northeast 154th Street. It is a roadway safety project. And just like to inform everyone that this meeting is being recorded. And it will be available for your viewing after the conclusion of this project now. For those Spanish, the center would like to speak only Spanish. Si usted necesita traducción durante la reunión, por favor comuníquese conmigo. Usted puede presionar el botón de levantar la mano o puede pedir ayuda de traducción a través del chat y un miembro de nuestro equipo lo asistirá. En este momento no tenemos a nadie que está presionando el botón. Continuemos. Wana?
Tu vez una tradición creal para la reunión, se ha tenido contactado al Macalix 786 de 694146. Otra voy a un demo tradición, tu nombre, cualquier cuestión que no es doble ordinario. Y pues mamá, aquí planca y dos.
Thank you, Wana. We don't have anyone who desires any translation in Creole. That being said, if you experience any technical difficulties throughout this evening, please contact Ms. Wana. At 786-269-4146 or by email, wana@icprgroup.com so that she can assist. I'd like to go over our meeting agenda this evening. We'll start off with the rules of engagement. Followed by introduction of our project team. We do the non-discrimination policy. We'll let you know where the project is located. The schedule, the cost, the scope of work, what to expect, a maintenance of traffic, and we'll conclude with the questions and answers portion. So that you know how things are going to work down today, attendees will remain muted throughout the meeting except for the open discussion session. Use the raise your hand button on your go-to webinar panel to provide a comment. Provide your full name first, address and comment. Attendees are welcome to submit questions, comments using the go-to webinar question panel. A member of the team will respond during the open discussion. Participants will have three minutes to ask questions and provide comments. Meeting will begin with a presentation followed by comments and questions. If you're calling in via phone. You will not be able to provide any comments during the meeting. To provide comments, call the number that you see on your screen, 762694146, or send an email to mswana@icprgroup.com. Tonight's presentation is available on the link that you see right there on your screen. Our team will remain until 8:00 PM. Like to introduce to you our project team available this evening. Our project manager with FDOT is Mr. Yu Wang. Our project engineer with FDOT is Mr. Manuel Salera. Our FDOT right-of-way manager, Ms. Tanya Shaguri. And I am the community outreach specialist, Rodolfo Roman. Please note that there is a court reporter joining us this evening. For this public hearing, and a friendly reminder that this public hearing is being recorded. And this time I'd like to recognize any federal, state, county, or city officials. Who may be present tonight. If so, please raise your hand. This time I don't see anyone, so we will proceed. I'd like to let you know that this public hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state requirements, and it is being conducted consistent with the American Disabilities Act of 1990. And with all the state statutes. Florida Department of Transportation is required to comply with various non-discrimination laws and regulations, including Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Public participation at this meeting is solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting District Title VI Coordinator, Mr. Nicholas Danu. At 35475219, or in writing at FDOT, the address is 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Miami 43172. Or by email, nicholas.danu@dotstateFL.us. Or our State Title VI Coordinator, Jacqueline Paramore, the number there you see on your screen. 850-414-4753, or in writing at the Equal Opportunity Office, 605 Swan Street, MS 65. Tallahassee, Florida, 32399, or the email jacqueline@paramore@dotstateFL.us. Okay, with that being said, I'm going to give the floor to our project engineer, Mr. Manny Nusorala. Who will let us know about this traffic safety project located on Northeast Sixth Avenue from Northeast 147th Street to Northeast 154th Street. Manny? Manny, if you could turn on your microphone, it's muted. You should be good to go now, man.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, perfect. As Verofo mentioned, the project limits are along Northeast Sixth Avenue from south of Northeast 147th Street to north of Northeast 154th Street. On the next slide, I want to present is the purpose and need for the study. Basically, this is a pedestrian safety study that was requested by Miami Day Commissioner Jean Monistheim. To identify high crash locations for pedestrians and bicycles within the study limits. Now, the report identified various pedestrian crossings. Where there was heavy pedestrian traffic that would be well-suited to providing crosswalks. And these new signalized crosswalks will improve pedestrian safety and enhance pedestrian mobility. There is also one municipality within the project study area, which is the city of North Miami. On the next slide, I just want to point out the project schedule and the cost. Our production, which is the submittal of sign and seal plans, is scheduled for January of 2022. The letting date, that is when the project will be let to bid for contractors, will be in September of 2022. With construction starting shortly thereafter on November 2022. At this time, the construction duration and the end construction date have not been finalized. And the total construction cost is estimated at $1.3 million. We're currently at the 90% design phase and working with municipalities and reviewing the plans, as well as receiving feedback from the public. Once the project goes past construction, we will transition the project to the construction team. I want to briefly discuss the project scope. Basically, we'll be repaving and restriping the roadway at the signalized intersection locations. We'll be adding a new traffic signal at the intersection of Northeast Sixth Avenue and Northeast 147th Street. As well as providing two mid-block crossings north of Northeast 150th Street. And north of Northeast 154th Street. At these locations, we will be reconstructing or providing new pedestrian curb ramps. Now, at the intersection with Northeast 147th Street. We'll be modifying the driveway leading out of the property on the northwest corner. At 14700 Northeast Sixth Avenue to a right-in, right-out only, but providing a stop sign and a right-turn-only sign. We'll also be providing street lights to enhance pedestrian safety and visibility at night, as well as upgrading street signs. Now, during construction, we will basically have three phases for means of traffic. Ring closures will be required in order to construct the sidewalk, the curb ramps, as well as a median aisle refuge. In addition, while the curb ramps and sidewalk are being reconstructed, we will be detouring pedestrians. Pedestrian detours will be at the opposite side of Northeast Sixth Avenue. Utilizing existing signalized intersections at Northeast 145th Street, Northeast 149th Street, and Northeast 159th Street. Now, during construction, we should also be expecting noise, particularly as we are. Reconstructing sidewalks and curb ramps and installing the new master uprights for the signalized. Intersections and mid-block crossings. There will be dust, and this will be the contract to be required to water and sweep them in order to minimize the dust, related construction dust. In addition, we'll be providing access to area properties at all times. On the next slide, I'll get, I want to emphasize that pedestrian detours will be required for the sidewalks and curb ramps, and this will be clearly marked during construction. In addition, the speed limit of 40 miles an hour will be maintained during construction. On the next slide, I want to just point out first is an overview of the three locations. The first one being at Northeast 147th Street, the second, just north of Northeast 150th Street. And finally, the third location, just north of Northeast 154th Street. Now, I'll be discussing each location one by one. We'll start off with Northeast 147th Street. At this location, we're providing a new fully signalized intersection. As well as special emphasis crosswalks on the west leg, south leg, and north leg. We will also be providing crosswalk on the east leg. Now, we're providing new mast arms, as well as modifying the pavement markings. Currently, existing pavement markings are for a two-way left-turn configuration. However, since we are signalizing the intersection, we will be modifying this to left-turn only. That is, northbound left turn to westbound Northeast 147th Street. And southbound left turn to eastbound Northeast 147th Street. There is currently a school zone flashing sign at the south leg of this intersection. Which will be relocated further south in order to ensure visibility of the school zone flashing sign. And to avoid interference from the proposed mast arms. Finally, at the northwest corner of the intersection for 14700 Northeast Sixth Avenue. We will be modifying the existing driveway. To a right-in, right-out only, as well as providing a stop sign and right-turn-only sign. As the existing two-way left-turn pavement markings will be modified into a left-turn only. Access to this property will be maintained through the existing driveway at Northeast 147th Street. Those patrons will then utilize the proposed signal in order to continue northbound. Or southbound onto Northeast Sixth Avenue. Now, for the second location, north of Northeast 150th Street, we're proposing a mid-block crossing. Pedestrian refuge will be provided in the median where the existing two-way left turns are currently located. And a new mast arm will be provided and will be pedestrian actuated. Such that pedestrians can safely cross to these, to the opposite side of the street. Finally, on Northeast 154th Street, again, we will be providing a mid-block crosswalk. North of Northeast 154th Street in order to safely allow pedestrians to cross the street from one side to the other. Now, these locations were identified in the safety study that was performed by the Department of Transportation. The safety study identified these locations. First, because these are heavy pedestrian areas usage, but in addition, because of numerous crashes that have occurred. Including fatalities along this corridor. Now, for the placement of the mast arms and the traffic signal cabinets. There will be right-of-way impacts with permanent easements obtained in order to place these items. And this will be placed in as much as to allow for a ADA. Criteria to be met for the sidewalks. Now, to discuss right-of-way in more detail, Tanya will discuss the process.
Manny? Okay. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you joining us today. My name is Tanya Shaguri, and I work in the right-of-way section of FDOT. I wanted to take a moment to briefly explain the right-of-way process and where we are today in relation to the process. Now, there's a step that takes place before it gets to our section, but I'm including it in here so you may see how the properties get identified. So the first step prior to our section is project design and identification of the parcels needed for the project. A parcel is simply a portion of a property that is needed for the project. Once the parcels are identified, they are signed an acquisition agent, who then makes contact with the property owner. This could be by phone, email, or regular mail. The next step would be to survey or stake the parcel and review title work. This would identify any interest held on the property, including mortgages. And that's the stage that we're at right now. Once the title work is complete, an appraisal is ordered. The appraiser will mail a notice to the property owner to coordinate the inspection. The property owner may attend the inspection and provide any information they feel might be beneficial in establishing fair market value. It takes approximately 60 days from the date of inspection for our office to receive the appraisal. And as a heads up, we're also in between the title as well as the appraisal stage. So, a property owner should be anticipating a notice from the appraisal shortly, the appraiser shortly. Once the appraisal is complete and submitted to our office, the acquisition agent will contact the property owner to present the offer. Once the offer is presented, the closing isn't far behind. A purchase agreement gets signed, and the closing may take place approximately 30 days thereafter. That sums up the right-of-way process in a condensed, simplified manner. Thank you for your time, and I'm here if you have any questions, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Rodolfo?
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Manny. With that said, we're now going to move into the questions and answers portion. You can submit your question in the question box. After addressing the comments in the question box, we will open. The microphones. If we are unable to answer your question, project team will provide a written response after the meeting. If you'd like to speak, please press the raise your hand button. Participants will have three minutes to provide comments and questions to allow others to speak. Staff members will be available to answer questions in the order they are received, and as time permits. If your question is not responded to during the event, a response will be provided in writing during the meeting. Now, this is an opportunity for you to formally present your comments, opinions, and ideas about the project for the permanent record. Written comment forms can also be deposited, or sorry, mentioned right there, as I said in the comment box, but it could also be sent via mail. All written comments should be addressed to the FDOT Community Outreach Specialist, myself, Rodolfo Roman. And you're going to see the correction of the name, Rodolfo Roman. The address there, it will be 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172. Or you can also send your comments at the email that you see on your screen, which is roman@icprgroup.com. Or you can just simply give me a call at the number that you see on your screen, 765197160. This time, I'd like to give an opportunity for any elected officials who are joining us this evening. This time, we don't have any. Well, with that being said, if you would like to speak, you can click the raise your hand button on your control panel. Or you can simply write your comment or question on the questions box. So, we're going to give an opportunity here for our folks joining us. If they want to speak, they can go ahead and share comments. I do see here, we do have some attendees that are joining us. You know, Mr. Milton wanted, Mr. Milton Rajman wanted to speak, and again, this is being recorded. And we do have a court reporter that's joining us that is jotting down all the information, and this will be available for the public as well. Let's see here. Mr. Milton, would you like to speak? Trying to unmute you there. If you're having any technical difficulties, Mr. Milton, if you'd like to speak, or if not, then it's okay. You can call Ms. Wana. The number there to call is 786. As you stated here earlier, let me just put it on the screen there so you could see it yourself. If you're having any issues, second difficulties, and you'd like to speak, the number to call is 762694146, that's 762694146. As we're trying to. Allow Mr. Milton to speak. In the meantime, again, you can write your written comments. Send that to the FDOT at the address, which is 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue. And the room there is 6134 Miami, Florida, 33172, or you can send it to the email that you see on your screen, which is roman@icprgroup.com. I guess he's having some technical difficulties. Team, just bear with him. Trying to get the microphone to work. Wana, in case he calls you, not sure if he's called you, but if so, be on the local. Let's try to bring him in again. Mr. Milton, there you go. There you go. There you go. Okay, we got you there. Alrighty, sir. Welcome, welcome. So, you're, and again, for our court reporter, if you could just state your name, first name and last name.
Sure. My first name is Milton, last name is Raijman, R-A-I-J-M-A-N. And I'm involved in several corporations that have an interest in several properties along Sixth Avenue. Just to give you. An overview, I'm involved with 14806 Northeast Sixth Avenue. 14801 Northeast Sixth Avenue. 14755 Northeast Sixth Avenue. 14700 Northeast Sixth Avenue, and 14440 Northeast Sixth Avenue. So, that few blocks of Northeast Sixth Avenue is, is an important corridor for me because as I have a lot of. I have a lot of exposure to that corridor. In particular, I wanted to speak about 14700 Northeast Sixth Avenue. I am not in favor of the. Design that's being proposed for a number of reasons. Number one, like the project engineer said, it takes away my left-in and left-out feature. And only allows me to have that left-in, left-out through 147th Street instead of directly into my parking lot. And that's something that I think is valuable, and it's something that I don't want to lose. I also don't agree with having to signalize that intersection in the manner that it's being done. I think that it could be done much more cost-effectively and. Without impacting my property as much as it will. The, in particular, I think it's a waste or wasteful in the fact that. Northeast 147th Street. Is really a very short street. It basically, when 147th Street west of Sixth Avenue. Is only about a block and a half long, if that. Maybe, I don't know, I haven't measured it, but it may be 200 feet, 250 feet long, and then it's just a dead end. And the same street, 147th Street, east of Northeast Sixth Avenue. Is basically just the entrance to the parking lot of the apartment building at the corner of Northeast. On the, what would it be, would be the southeast corner of Northeast Sixth Avenue and 147th Street. So, it's not as if Northeast 147th Street is a highly trafficked street. It's not. The only vehicles that are headed east on 147th Street are those going to the apartment building, because that's how they enter their parking lot. And the ones going west don't really have very far to go, because as I said, it's about 250 feet long, if that. So, I don't see the necessity of having to signalize it more than what we already have there. I understand it's a safety project, but I believe that the crosswalks could be made. With the, like the flashing crosswalks similar to what they have on Alton Road and other places. I think maybe similar to something that you're proposing, like on 150th Street where they start to flash. I'm not sure if, if that's the same thing I'm speaking about, but I've seen these crosswalks that are very effective in. In high commercial neighborhoods, in high-traffic commercial neighborhoods, and they're very, and they're very effective. They start to flash, and people, you know, the cars stop, and the people are able to walk across the street. I don't believe we need to signalize it in the manner that we, that it's being designed. And I don't think I have to lose my left-in and left-out feature on my property. And that's, that's pretty much my point of view. I don't see the necessity, given the minimal traffic that exists on what is being called 147th Street, which is not. Which is really just. A driveway entrance to the east of one of Northeast Sixth Avenue. And just a couple of hundred feet of, of, and then a dead end on the west side of Northeast Sixth Avenue. And I'd like to hear, you know, what the rationale is, what the traffic count is going west on 147th Street. Because I think that those numbers have to be very, very, very small. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Milton, for joining us. And thank you for your comment. Team, would we like to provide a response?
I don't think that was a right-of-way.
No, 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 no.
Sure, and again, the reason that the intersection was selected was basically based off of pedestrian crashes and fatalities. As well as pedestrian generators. Those businesses at that intersection on the east side and west side are generating a significant amount of pedestrian traffic. And this is the best location where those pedestrians would be able to cross the street safely. In order to gain access to the businesses on the other side of the street. The safety study did review many locations, and again, based off crashes, based off fatalities. And pedestrian generators, this was the best location to place the signalized intersection.
Thank you, team. I also would like to add regarding why we have to signalize the crosswalk at 147th Street. The DOT did a safety study, like Manny said. We do have a MUTCD guideline to follow, which is the manual on uniform traffic control devices. In the guideline, they identify or list the certain warrants that our study would have to perform. So, based on the study, the. Area at the location actually meets one of the warrants which is required from the MUTCD. So, based on the traffic warrants, pedestrian counts, and also the existence by condition. The safety study recommended a traffic signal for this location.
Thank you, team. At this point, we don't have any further comments, questions? I think Mr. Milton had his raise, his hand raised. We have a little bit of time. I'll bring him up again here. Mr. Milton, you still had your hand up. Would you like to say something else, or? Bring him up again. I guess he's having some issues there, and he still had the hand up. We'll give it just a few more seconds, and then. If no further questions or comments, we would then conclude the public hearing portion. But we will remain until 8:00 PM, so let's give it one more shot here.
Are you able to hear? Are you, okay?
Yes, yes.
Well, I don't have the plans in front of me, and my question was. I believe there's a crosswalk being proposed on the south side of 147th Street. As well as a crosswalk on the north side of the intersection. Is, is that, is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Yes, that is correct. As we're fully signalizing the intersection, we're providing crosswalks on both the north leg and the south leg of Northeast Sixth Avenue.
So possibly, is it possible to eliminate the crosswalk on the north side? That way, I believe it would allow me to have that left in and left out and it's still, it still, um, takes care of the situation of concern, which is the crosswalk. The, the crosswalk going north and south on one forty-seven street, I don't have an issue with that one. But if you, if, if the design team can eliminate the crosswalk on the north side of the intersection, I think that would provide me the relief that I'm seeking and I think everybody will be happy.
Even if we were to eliminate the crosswalk on the north side, we would still have to remove the two-way left turn lane and make a left only from southbound to east, to eastbound because we have signaledized the intersection. So we would have to provide that movement even if we were to remove the crosswalk.
You would have to eliminate, coming from the south, you would have to prohibit left turn into the property? And left turn out of the?
Because we would still need to provide the, we saw the modify the existing two-way left turn into a left only for southbound northeast Sixth Avenue to eastbound northeast one forty-seventh street movements.
And what about the left out of the property?
Again, because as you see on the screen, it, that lane would, would be a left only. It would be a safety issue to make that, allow that left and basically a vehicle would, would find themselves with a, a vehi- vehicle, southbound vehicle that wished to make a left that was waiting for a gap.
Is there any other way to get this to a situ- to a type of resolution where everybody gets what they want? Is, is there anything else? Any other scenario that you can come up with possibly?
Well, as, as, um, Ms. Wang had mentioned, with the, the safety study recommended the crossing at this location based off the crashes, based off pedestrian generators and the fact that we met the MUTCD warrants for, um, providing safe passage for pedestrians from one side of the street to the other.
Uh, Mr. Milton, since the last time we met with you, um, I pray you to discuss this issue. F D O T internally, we have internal discussion to see if there's any other possibilities or other better options to define this crosswalk. So we, we investigated and we, we looked at the, the area, including the data. Um, it still concluded that the current design is the best before alternative to achieve the safety issue or address the safety concern.
Yeah, it's not the best for me though. It's not good for me.
We understand, Mr. Milton, and, um, we, we thank you again for, 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 uh, sharing your comments and your questions and, uh, all of this will be, uh, part of the, the public record. We really appreciate your attendance and, and, uh, allowing us to speak to you and explain, uh, this project.
Because from, because if someone's coming south on northeast Sixth Avenue and that crosswalk, um, in front of my property is eliminated, the one on the north side of the intersection. If, as long as that, as long as those lights have a turn arrow, they, the, the car with, the vehicles coming from the north that would want to turn into the parking lot of the apartment building on one forty-seven street, they would still have the ability to do that. And, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't, I don't see where that would be affected. I think, I think that the crosswalk could be eliminated, the left turn with signalization into going east on a hundred and forty-seven street would be kept. You wouldn't lose that. It would still be safe to do that.
If we were eliminate the crosswalk, we would still have to, as shown in the, in the um, plan that, that, uh, has, has shown, we would still need to make that left only. So it would not be safe for a vehicle exiting the driveway to cross a left only lane because there would be no refuge for them waiting for a gap from northbound vehicles. At the same time, someone making a left from northeast one forty-seventh street could also hit the vehicle if they, again, they wouldn't see the person leaving the driveway and there would be a conflict there. Because northeast one forty-seventh street would have the right of way of making a left turn on northbound northeast Sixth Avenue.
Okay. Uh, for the record, I continue to oppose the, the, the design.
Understood. Thank you, sir, and thank you again for, for sharing your comments. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, with that being said, team, uh, as of right now, uh, we don't have any more comments. Uh, with that being said, uh, I'm going to go ahead. Like I stated, we will be here until eight P M. Uh, however, I'd like to make some, some final, uh, final, uh, mentions here. That all written comments are to be postpartum, more than ten days following the date of this hearing. That will be roughly December twenty-eighth because of the holidays to be included as part of the public record. The verbatim transcript of this hearing's oral proceedings, together with all written material received as part of the hearing record and all displays and information and material provided at the here will be, be made part of the project decision-making process and will be available at the district office for public review upon request. At this point, I'd like to, um, state that, uh, thank you for attending for our virtual public meeting and providing your input into this project. It is now six, six, uh, six forty-two P M. I hereby officially close the public here for project four four three eight fifty-five dash one dash fifty-two dash oh one zero nine one five northeast Sixth Avenue from northeast one forty-seventh street to northeast one fifty-fourth street. We thank you and have a great evening. However, this, this now concludes the public hearing portion, so uh, thank you very much for the court reporter. We're done at that end, but our staff will remain, uh, until eight P M. To take any, uh, questions or comments from the public. Uh, so anything that you'd like to, uh, to share, uh, you can go ahead and submit it right there on the comment box. Or you can, uh, send us an email at the email that I'm about to put right now on the screen. Just give me a little second here. Put that there. You can send it to roman@icprgroup.com. And tonight's presentation is available on the link that you see on your screen. You can also go to F D O T Miami day dot com, search under, uh, projects and click on design and North Miami date and you will see this project there available with all the information. Once again, uh, we will be remaining here until eight P M. Um, for any questions or any concerns or, or comments, you can write it on the question box or you can send us an email. That being said, uh, my team, I, I don't know if he still has his hand up, but let me, let me make sure that I we're on the safe seven, Mr. Milton did have the hand up, but just want to make sure it's, it's not an error, but let me go back to him. Um, no, he took it off. So I, I guess we're, we're okay for now. Okay. So once again, uh, everyone, thank you very much for joining us. Uh, we will remain until eight P M. It's now six forty-five P M. Uh, we'll be taking any questions and comments from the public. Uh, I will advise the team if we have that. Um, and I'll keep you posted. All right, everyone. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for joining us for virtual public meeting. If you have any comments or questions, you can submit it on the question box or you can simply click on the raise your hand button for the virtual public hearing for St. Row 915 Northeast 6th Avenue from Northeast 147th Street to Northeast 154th Street. We will be on until 8pm. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to submit it. Thank you. We will be on until 8pm. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to submit it. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us for a virtual public meeting. If you have any comments or questions, you can submit it on the question box or you can simply click on the raise your hand button. For the virtual public hearing for St. Row 915 Northeast 6th Avenue from Northeast 147th Street to Northeast 154th Street. We will be on until 8pm. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to submit it. Thank you.
Uh, this has been for zero nine one five northeast uh six avenue from northeast one forty seventh street to northeast one fifty fourth street. Thank you very much for joining us this evening and everyone have a great and happy holidays.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you everyone. Have a great uh Christmas and New Years and everything that you celebrate.